Any public discussion on any item on the agenda? Minutes.
Hey. We got back about seven thirty. On Saturday. And I just was like, I'm tired. And the kids have been sick. I was like, I don't want to go in.
Yeah.
Bring them back to my mom, but. Keesel had to come out and say bye.
That's because she was going, get out of here, bye, get rid of me.
She was upset that I didn't come in to say bye?
We need to get Kyle on that hat to the rim around here and some around here up at the lobby square. They said, hey, go do all this guy in Cherokee.
Which hat?
Well, I don't know what they call it. The rims are about that long or round up here.
I could buy one at Bass Pro again, Saturday.
Black hat, black. It'll be black.
Stetson makes those.
Huh?
Stetson used to make those.
Of course, you don't wear black clothes. They usually wear black clothes, don't they?
Yeah.
She said that Satan had another ear infection.
Sure, they wanted to go to a Thunder game because we got tickets to it while we were down there. But I was like, I'm broke. I've got money at Bass Pro. And he was like, halfway home, he was like, Keesel said I can buy your ticket. I was like.
Well, why didn't you say that?
I told you when we were standing at Bass Pro that I couldn't afford a ticket right now. I got my car tag, so.
Have you been to Cabello's down there? Good. Pretty good, too.
It's all good, Jay.
They're both owned by the same company now.
Really?
I work for Bass Pro, we're partners here.
I just think Cabello's was there. I haven't been to it yet. Spent a lot of time at Bass Pro.
Sorry I shrunk your spot to sign, but I didn't want to go to another page.
No way.
So I made your spot smaller.
Sure I called the meeting door?
Go around, change something. You need to change that.
Yeah, I love changing. Did you see that?
I didn't even pay attention or something.
I've been that way ever since January.
You can go by Walker, I don't care.
Not in this lifetime.
Oh, I think you'd already changed it. I'm white, if you, before.
Oh.
That's pretty good stuff.
For the preparations on that subject.
We got Walker County Commissioner. They got Walker, Texas Ranger. We got Walker County Commissioner.
We got Johnny Walker in the bottle.
I've been called Kunta Kinte, too. I've been called Kunta Kinte, too.
Really?
Yeah.
I've heard you call it other names, but we don't repeat them.
Because of my nickname.
Yeah, we can repeat those.
I'll make a motion to approve what they changed.
I'll see. Smokey made him second or on the favor side. Yemen on warrants for the pay.
The movie Roots totally was. You never seen it happen. It's about a black man. I won't tell you what I would say on the camera with.
Good Coast Gardener, Ruth, though. Alex Haley wrote that while I was in the Coast Guard. After that, he could never write unless he was on a ship.
A ship?
He'd get on merchant ships.
Okay.
I just wanted to see if he could get.
That was like, that was scale.
I won't tell you what else they called him, but on camera in here, yeah. I'll tell you off camera.
I got the little ticket for the.
Can I have blackmail on it? Does it record it with you?
They're talking?
Do you have blackmail on you?
Well, and that one song with Salt of Down, it was Walkers, too. People started singing that. Salt of Down, Toby Walker. I was like, oh, God, guys. Enough troubles it is, let alone New York coming over. You're too young, Kyle.
Apparently I'm not an adult yet, because that's what my niece told me a couple of weeks ago.
Who told you that?
My daughter-in-law.
My niece, my other brother's daughter. She asked me a question and I gave her answer. She said, how do you know that? I'm an adult. She said, no, you're not. You're not married. I was like, uh, thanks. So you're six. Thanks for that.
She's old enough to explain to her, you turn eighteen or whatever, you become an adult.
Yeah.
The eyes of law, the eyes of law, they'll try you as a double, but I'm going to tell you. Wasn't me, but.
Not that time.
Yeah. No, I was married. Twenty-nine, thirty years old. I spent the night in a crossbar motel. Did she come bail you out? No.
I got halfway there once and I talked my way out of it.
She called her mother or my mother? It's been my, well, my daughter, yeah.
You never would bail you out?
Huh?
You never bailed you out?
Well, she did the next day. It's my money anyhow.
My momma came in and said, no, no, but she walked him all the way to the courthouse just to tell me she wasn't bailing me out.
Oh, it only cost me a hundred dollars to bail a bossman, yeah. Well, yeah. Took my picture, set it in his car in my front yard. I bet I looked really cute. But it ain't costing the mortgage on court and everything else, lawyer.
So I have a copy of your mugshot somewhere?
I'm sure they do.
Did you even frame it on your wall?
No, I don't. Probably use it around here to keep them isolated or something.
About to ask a man.
Anybody who's lived a while has a history. Anyone who's lived a while has a history. Last time I had to go for my security clearance.
Yeah.
It was so long. I said, you know, I'm sixty years old. They expect me to be. I like getting people right out of college, but there's not that much to.
Right.
Research.
Like I said, that one happens by us going to kids' Bible school program out in Sun that next afternoon, it's hundred and ten degrees and ten.
Probably everybody knew you had been spending the night in jail.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, the grass got watered real good around me from me sweating so bad.
Was it even from the heat?
Yeah. It was in August, July or whatever, yeah. Hell, yeah.
They told me I had a wedding in Kansas in August. The old Catholic church. No air conditioning in the church. They just had little fans sitting on boards. It was just kind of circulating air. Of course, you had their, they had the keg outside.
Last wedding, last time I was at a wedding, it did. Church's wiry, yeah. There's no air conditioning either. Oh, boy. I probably just walked back to church and snuck outside.
My sister, huh? Sister was from right at the wedding. My sister would be back and kneeling board down. So she picked her feet up on the kneeling board, was like, I can take your feet down. Highly, like, very rude. They were proud upon you using their kneeling board as a foot rest.
Yeah.
She felt so uncomfortable.
That's what she said.
Just wish to assume that you're a heathen, give you mercy.
It was like wooden, like wooden, all wooden bitches and stuff. So like every time anybody moved, it's great.
Yeah, I went to.
This is what you read?
Yeah. No, this was, my cousin got married up in Kansas, that Catholic church up there.
We had, we were two years ago. A wedding, a little ringwood. And it was like. It was, it was hot, it was beautiful.
So glad that our wedding was over.
It was outside.
Let me see that. For central. I drank my pop, everybody else drank their other beverages. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Including the priest.
Oh, yeah. I went to Catholic weddings, old Carson, big Catholic churches and all that, okay. Mark Sturgeon's wedding. The Sturgens and how the first, oh. Anyhow. They have two, have our preacher and have the priest, you know. And Mark's up there and they're all just swaying. They're already drunk. This priest is going through his stuff. All of a sudden, Mark looks over at Kirk and says, what the hell is he saying? I can't understand him. Sweeney Lane just sunk. So, yeah. It was pretty wild. But they kept, you know, doing all the kneeling downs. Poor old lady beside me, she get up and she get up. It was pretty, yeah.
Almost were out.
Best part about it was when them guys, they were. They come out of Compton City, had a lady, limousine driver. Soon she stops, she got like, she. Got that car slammed that door, and I'm not driving you, like, like, like anywhere again. She was wanting, she got back her car, huh? No, they were bad.
Who, who are files in the next election for this year?
Jay and Toby and.
Valerie and Donna.
Donna and Valerie. Valerie won't take office until July of next year.
They.
She, they, she doesn't take office until July. Tenders will take office different time. They run the same time.
They have a major county meeting about it because they can't, because you can't dispose of property.
Can't dispose of anything. That's what. Jay just sold some stuff at the CED auction. Although we've started the process, we still can't dispose of it until after the. The filing period.
It's already sold, though.
I, yeah. Just make a note on the bottom of it.
Right.
Can't do it.
You can't legally have this property until it's mine. You have to file a leave.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. I just saw your name on it. Had to be perfect.
I was trying to watch them.
Well, just live until next month, ain't it, right?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I know, big one.
Kelly's position's not elected, right? That little question board?
Do what?
Kelly's not elected, right?
No, she's not. She's appointed.
Yeah. Appointed for life. You have to reappoint her every year.
I think, isn't there like a five-year term or something? It's a weird thing, is they appoint her.
I wonder why they would just put that one on the ballot, too.
Do I? I don't know. I don't know. No, it's, uh, Jason.
Hey, how many sign up for you, Jay?
I'm not one of them. Sure do, you do.
The hardest part is, uh, finding elections, picking the work of the elections.
Sorry, Jay.
She was a needs listener. What's wrong?
We need somebody watching after you and me.
Yeah, sure.
Just gotta have Republican, Democrat, and Independent, right?
That's where it gets all the worry.
Thank you, sir.
How about the sooner getting in and the Cowboys not?
Thank you, sir.
How about the sooner getting in and the Cowboys not, the big decision?
Oh, yeah.
How about?
Yeah.
I didn't like that either. Glad to see what they fed the inmates on transport. Breakfast sliders, sliders, sausage, no egg to go, three biscuits total.
Brian had his daughter up here. In the bed, she was doing her internship with her dad. She's going to school soon. Oh, what's it called? Criminal justice gotten.
You told me he got her up here.
It probably got.
Before thirty, to take some transport someone.
Yeah, she was up there.
Missed a blanket for Toby.
She won't chew that. Eat it, ain't she?
Well, she's just gonna, I think she's done with eating it and now gonna go to.
Could be.
What did she say, Kyle?
He didn't tell me where she went. He just said she.
And when she gets done with that, then she'll go get her masters and then she'll go get her doctorate.
It's much school for me.
So I said, I said.
She'll be a lawyer?
No, criminal justice, like a forensic specialist.
Well, investigator.
I thought about getting my masters and then I realized that I have to pay for it. And it doesn't really help me financially or anything, so.
Well, I know I'm glad Christina's last two years ago, you, she worked that last semester. She couldn't work. Nor, that act fell over. She didn't know what it was going to cost her. But she's got her masters.
They call me Doctor. Doctor in BS.
Three twelve.
Ready to get some business cards made up with that, all right?
I don't have to.
M D and B S.
How was your exercise for work, though?
How was exercise for work?
Yeah.
Good. Wells was actually going to be able to make it this time, but they had. Mr. Elliott's funeral, so he called and said he was going to do the funeral. Robert was here. He was doing good.
Standing up straight.
Was that a, Jay, was that a pretty full funeral?
He's still walking with a lot.
Mr. Elliott, was there a lot of people that went to that funeral?
I don't know. They streamed it in the gym on the beach green. I don't know how many there are out there, but it was. Wow. Auditorium's full and all the foyer out front, people standing and.
That's what I figured. I was like, huh. I wish, I wish the school would have, or they would have got Greg just to figure out how to livestream it, too. So like I could have watched it, people would not go.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't make it. I, like I should, but. I didn't want to fight the crowd and.
There was a. I don't know what they told count, but there was a lot of people there.
I figured there would be. There's probably no place to park either.
You had to walk away.
Oh, I don't know whether, well, west side of town or east side of town. Well, north of the river, north of the creek.
By the water tower. They walk all the way.
Start to have the bustle from nowhere else.
Okay, now what Brandon do is stay.
Brandon?
Break me out.
Did the Dutch lift for a hundred forty-five, power lift for one forty-five?
They squatted in there, so they did the Dutch lift. And he had one eight-man, and then he, this one, he was like fourth, and he was doing, competing against eleven-man schools.
They had probably had full-time strength coaches on that part of the problem.
He said one kid, I don't remember what, what weight class he was in, but they said he, he squatted seven hundred some pounds.
Yeah, but it's probably the big giant line.
They have.
Union or Jinx.
He's had a lot of those kids had that Division One scholarships already.
Yeah. That's what I had to tell Ronnie Nickel one time, you know. Yep, Zach Berg, quite an athlete down here, but there's twelve million, ten million people in the city of New York. Don't you reckon there's a couple hundred of them just as good as Zach Berg or better than his age? Well, don't think about that.
It's hard to get people from here because we play eight man, too.
Well, yeah.
We don't, you know, you don't have. Very few guys who adapted to how to play eleven-man. Different field, different.
Yeah, because I was peeking over Western Citizen one day. These big guys keep, big guys keep coming in. It was Aiden High's football team. They're not very good.
They're pretty big. If you take like some of them built like Utah, it would. He's good at eight-man, but you put him against eleven-man, he's not going to play tight end. He may not, he's probably not.
You got, you got to be a quick kicker, not a kicker.
Probably wouldn't be fast enough to play wide receiver.
That's right.
It's always about how quick you are, though. You get good footwork. If you get good footwork, then you can move on.
After I first, you know, got out of school, I was still where I visit my friends, but there was no jock dorm. You get in the elevator out of them guys, you say, oh, Lord. They come up to their waist, you know? And they put the golfers in with the jock dorm. They didn't like it too well. They either got to move out somewhere.
Had some classes I don't question for some of their lying evidence.
Is there no way into that pile? What's going on?
Getting it down.
Get lower. You're getting a break after I get through. Put a dollar sign, put them together.
I'm sorry, do what?
Dollar.
It's gonna be done.
Dollar.
No, she's having a trouble.
She takes off the same.
Which is getting to be too messy.
Hours different. Did you see the Hereford hogs? We have Hereford hogs. Little different look.
But that's white in the body of. No.
I guess they come from overseas somewhere, but yeah. Because I saw my first bunch over in Northwest District. Wow. Looks like Chester Durock Cross, yeah. They're called Herefords. It's like a Hereford cattle, yeah.
That's the kind I would pick. I'd always pick the breeds that. Like, I never wanted to cross because I'm like, that's what everybody shows.
Right.
I didn't like the white, I didn't like them, the white hogs, because I kept them outside, so then they always were sunburned. So I usually showed birds or the spots. Every once in a while, I'd have a ham, but not right off.
Yeah, the mired rink, yeah. But I kept the Hereford hog, turned up.
Is there a class for them?
Yep.
Very many in the class?
Oh, wow, like, I did thirty of maybe all the other breeders. Okay, I have twenty-three.
That's still impressive.
We have a new.
I remember when they added goats to the camera show.
I remember.
I remember they added Speckleface sheep to the.
I am. When I showed, like, it used to be springtime, the spring shuttle was always, you showed the gills and hogs. And then the fall was always, you showed the bears. And now it's so, they're so, they show everything.
Want to sign that off above your head, Brian?
Mm-hmm, I understand. Fine.
Yes, yes, one is the same.
I can remember they made, when they made natural color sheep, it's because their breeding would be black. And that's what Speckleface, that made that a class.
Yeah, a little natural, a little bit of lies.
Had three-eighths Angus and five-eighths and then A O B, any other breed, yeah.
Just so many different classes now.
I can remember those Hereford Angus, Shorthorn, and Crossbred, and that was it.
Now you have.
Other than the miniatures.
Now you have your markers, you have your markers to your group, you have your prospects group, you have your heifers.
Oh, yeah.
Hard to keep up with them all.
You go with the big shovel, they had Longhorns and all them, yeah.
God, look at them. Oh, I'm not sorry about that. I packed that in the front.
I thought you guys were, didn't have very many in this week, I guess, but we need to send you a double next week.
I bet.
We gotta make notes for that.
I was sent that Cincy brought her also.
Yeah.
Especially if she's replaced.
Now.
You're gonna put coming, Kyle?
Hey, she made a good impression, though. This is the second day of on the job. She had brought donuts, so.
Look out, she'll want some. You gonna quit coming?
No. You can't get rid of me that easy.
I don't. So that'll be when I'm gone. Haven't seen one these as well.
Golden.
Have we done anything? Those guys got caught, now they're living on stream, mainstream here, grand.
Which case?
Well, one of them used to be a teacher here, whatever.
Uh-huh. It's in the course now.
Have a couple of years. Nothing moves that.
I'm gonna make that review tomorrow. I need to order a truck, and then I can bring it out one day.
That'd be a good idea. Better than another day.
Is that a big deal? I mean.
Where does that bring out? You got a tank, two fifty?
There's two tanks, but then I can hold. About fifty gallon or two hundred, maybe, but we fall for storm season.
What storm season?
Um.
No storm.
Oh.
Yeah, storm season, that means it's gonna have to have rain.
Yeah, or snow or something.
Take anything we can get.
Probably just get wind and dirt.
We're getting enough wind to make up for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember where it was. I think it was in Texas. Their D O P were having to get, like, trucks out to. They got hailstorms so bad that they had to rapidly push those hail off the road.
Yeah.
I've never seen them have to use a truck to do it, like, or, I don't think it was a, the Grader or what they use.
I've seen it pretty thick right here. I bet you, I had to go use the Grader to blow sand off the road. There's no, the sand drifts.
One of the bad things about.
They better hope it rains, they burnt that whole refuge out there in dirt sand, not sticking up.
Oh, really?
They were going on.
Going on the highway?
I got, had a guy call me this morning. He said, how come you let them burn? Hey, we didn't. That guy told me, I'm the federal guy and I can do what I want with it.
And then he followed up with, then we're here to help.
And I told him, I said, well, these departments get called out. You're going to be sent a bill. And if structures burn or lives lost, you're liable. Because we got, well, we could have overrode the governor the other day, but we backed off on that.
They did, didn't they?
But they could override the county.
We did it on a perfect day.
How about the one by Drummond where they burnt, you see where they burnt that off? Did you see that smoke?
That what?
They burnt that one off, bro. There's a deal by Drummond.
Thursday afternoon.
We had to say that.
Yeah, we saw the smoke and headed to the fire station to monitor the radio, and then we got a call on number eleven to mutual aid for Naskatunga.
They even show up.
Visiting for two. These are for two.
Bob and I left Byron, and we were the first ones on scene, and we had it knocked down and run out of water.
I waved, I said, we're only through.
Four people, right?
I went through and I turned around, I was like, 'cause I was coming out there taking pictures, like, well, it was out, by the time I got there, it was already out.
Yeah.
And as I was coming back through, that's when they, when they showed up.
I'll make a motion to approve. All in favor, Jay?
All in favor, I.
Aye.
He's holding on.
Yeah, they got twos on them.
No, I thought you said this should three also, just one and two?
Maybe he gave his stack.
There may be some, there's, there are these, there are these.
I might miss three.
Those are all twos there.
Those are three.
I don't see any.
You'll show it.
We got some.
There's sheriff, don't send those.
The old sheriff, are they all sheriff?
Yeah.
They're all sheriff.
All sheriff, you got them, okay.
Yeah, up northwest of Drummond, they've got, in the Drummond flats, I don't know how many acres they burned.
We, uh, went through on Saturday, went to cut through Drummond, we got it. We should, we should, uh, we had to pick up Kevin and Jay, uh, over here now.
How was the Rome Southern Drummond?
Not bad.
Did it work, have it worked on yet?
I don't think so, I can't remember.
It's been pretty rough, Northern Drummond, I got fixed. Sometimes I do that too, I'm going down to, I'm gonna sit here in Norman, the Southern Drummond, I could fly, I'll be running eight mile an hour.
Shannon was trying to argue with me, we were coming back on I, on I forty, and I said, well, you know, you could take, you know, coming back that way, you could take that road, and I said, it'll bring you through Fairview, he said, no, well.
Yeah, we.
Then he's like, see, it's O K, and I said, there's a southern turnoff, you gotta turn to go through that road, and that's.
Takes you through Fairview, or you go through.
Yeah, and I go through O K to Bridgewater.
Right.
I was like, I know I'm right, taking this road at times.
Yeah, that's the way I've taken a bus for years.
I four, that's, we started going on my way, we, on Highway, take I thirty-five, we go to church camp, and we started taking I forty, and.
I just go down to Ringwood, O K, with Tonga, whatever, you get on forty.
We kept the blanket.
I'll second that, baby.
All in favor?
Aye. 'Cause there's not much traffic, and you can fly down there.
No road crossings, okay.
No road crossings.
Problem property access easily in the south, fourth quarter, twenty-two, twenty-five, twelve, remove trees, if you want to do all of them.
Because you want all of them?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I agree. Oh, yeah, 'cause you know, South of Kew, that O K, you can see a long way, isn't it, get down there, yeah. That's the worst thing about these newer vehi, newer vehicles, you know, when I grew up with you, didn't wanna drive, not even an hour.
What district are these in?
Two.
All of them, it's your.
I'm in a tree removal.
I got a tree.
Down like you are.
I got a tree you can remove, free.
Well, I've helped Ken, that's my test, if it passes that test, I'll do it.
If I need to, I can say I'm, it's on rear road, I don't guess that'd be Jay's, that'd be Jay's district. It's on rear.
Really?
I don't have history, but it's same road.
I'll make a motion to approve, three seconds. All in favor?
Aye. I thought you were gonna say it was over here in your front yard.
It is in my front yard.
Revised January transportation of juveniles for security into facility.
That might be gonna shiver that a bit, yeah.
They coded it wrong, this is one that's already went through, but I told her, I said, let's just put it through, that way we, all the J signs there on the very, very bottom, and I'll later write it.
They coded it wrong or whatever?
Yeah, uh, um, she sent the other one in here. And. I'm gonna need to explain that to me. Something with the signature, she had the wrong person, they were supposed to sign it instead of us, but I can't read the signatures anyway, but there's the one before, and I.
Who's they? Transport signature, I don't know.
So they highlighted it, and told them that the other one needed to sign it, so.
It's always, it's usually.
Is this one only been, did you have another one that was provided, it's all around this table?
Yes, yes.
Is that this one?
No.
It's a different one?
Those were, I think, November and December's were revised, this is January, so it's like, I've been every month.
Is this like the same company that?
Well, it's, this one is who signed them, and before.
Sandra, she was burning, go get some.
Yeah, I can't read the signature on either one of them, who's initials it is or anything. Before, they were, um, like, not supposed to put a name or something, so they had to send them back, and they had to go back to the meeting.
Oh, they're pregnant, well, yeah, they don't put two names on there.
Well, and I don't think it was even just the juvenile, I think it was, like, they're supposed to, like, put something different, and they didn't put the name on there, they were supposed to put something different on there. So they sent them back to Amanda, and they went, they gotta be signed, so they gotta go back to the meeting, but they already approved them, so they go back to the meeting, and it's gotta be signed.
So we accept them?
I'll second them.
All in favor?
Aye, nice little job, the hooker, he could get a kid for court, bring it back and take him back.
I'm seeing business, a lady called me Friday, April is Child Abuse Month, and they wanted to know if they could tie some blue ribbons on the gazebo or the tree out front. And I said, finds me, but I'm gonna bring it up to commission me, so.
They can put them on the Goldie Bowls if they want to.
It, yeah, gazebo, something, it's not. So I'll notify her, I tell her, she give me a phone number.
They called me, and I went, call the commissioner.
Yeah, well, I could've done it, but I said, well, you know, that's commission, same as me, I just think they know about it, maybe you had an objection, so I'll let her know, and go text the meeting.
Is this Child Abuse Awareness?
She just told me Child Abuse Month.
So we can amuse our children on April?
Do what?
We can amuse our children on April?
That's what that means.
Why didn't you do this a couple years ago, and mine weren't of age?
We can beat. He didn't use the word Eric, 'cause I wrote it right off, but she said it's child abuse.
We can beat them till the.
Probably awareness.
That's probably.
Probably is awareness, maybe you oughta interject that word in there, it might look sound better.
I'm gonna say that Jay gives a permission.
Jay can mispermission.
No, he doesn't.
If you give him permission, he's gonna beat the crap out of your kids, why? I move adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.